Dan, hurry. Pledge of Allegiance and a short indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May God grant you always a sunbeam to warm you, a shelter angel so nothing can harm you, a laughter to cheer you, family and friends near you, and whenever you need a prayer, heaven to hear you. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Leese?
Here. I move approval of the agenda.
Second. Ken's got it.
Rule call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leese?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
I move approval of Midnight's regular meeting of March 1st, 2022.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Leese?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Fiscal officers report.
We, on our health account, we have a balance of eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The working-- I'm sorry. You can't hear me?
I think they're turning it up in the back.
Okay. Is Kim turning it up?
Yeah, I think she's going to turn it up.
Can you hear this?
Yes.
Okay. The health savings account has a balance of eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The major working checking account contains eight million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and three cents. That included a, the tax, the six-month tax that we received from the county on property of four million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-three cents. Our meter account, the investment account, contains eight million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. The records retention schedule, which we've been working on for quite a while, the RC2 forms were approved for submission to the Ohio Historical Connection for approval. And once they come back, they'll then be submitted to the Ohio Auditor's Office. If approved there, we then have, will have permission to shred decades of documents that we really have no reason to hang on to. That was it.
Okay, thank you. We have one presentation tonight, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, the Intelligence Unit.
So, in, Captain, was it 2020, late 2020?
Can everybody hear?
No. I can't hear any of you.
In late 2020, the Sheriff's Office formed a new unit, the Intelligence Unit, which is really going to change the way we operate in a number of areas, kind of agency-wide. And I asked some members of that unit, actually the founding members, to come speak to you tonight and explain what they're doing. So we have Captain Tony Aru and Akshata Kumavat, AK for most of us. And they'll be speaking to you a little bit tonight, kind of explain what those guys do.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm trying to speak in this, can you hear me? I'm gonna, I'll try and speak loudly. So, my name's Tony Aru, I'm the captain of the Intelligence Unit. It's good to be back. I was a patrol officer here in the 90s. And I've spent some time in different places of the Sheriff's Office, but that's landed me here, leading up the Intelligence Unit. There are six of us, including myself. Akshata's our operations manager for intelligence. And we have analysts and an intelligence investigator as well. She's going to talk about what we do and how that's a benefit to not just Sims Township, but the entire county and how all that meshes together. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? How about now?
Yeah, I can hear you a little bit.
All right. Well, good evening to all of you. I do want to say that I joined here in 2020 and I was in the capacity of an intel analyst before. When we were just starting up the unit, we saw that we had to look at different parts of the agency, our jail, the court services, patrol itself, investigations. And we came to the conclusion that intelligence not only affects investigations such as organized crime, but it also affects patrol a lot. And in fact, patrol is the primary source where we can have information to come through for us to filter and then help other units and help patrol back in return. The way this works is that when you have any incident and crime investigation section, CIS detectives are called over, they're expected to solve a crime right away. But when they are at the crime scene, they're looking at many other facets that are affecting the crime scene. And there's a lot of intelligence that goes into it. So it's not just us helping investigative units, but at the same time, helping the officers who have reported that information to us. Our model, since it has been more reactive in nature where officers were just responding to dispatch calls and they would just show up on the scene, treat the incident, and then solve it at that point, this is different because we, at our end, have certain intelligence priorities. This map that you see and which I think may be presented by LT here, this is not just a statistics report, but this helps us to guide our officers as to which areas are most highest concentration for calls for service are. And since Sims Township's calls were started to, you know, we started getting our data from there recently, we were able to publish this report. I think this is the first report that you are all receiving. And these are the forms of reports that you will be receiving in the coming months. What this essentially shows you is that in your district, which are the most priority areas for officers to focus on, whereas we would have certain number of resources at hand, we cannot simply send them everywhere. But we need to see where our most problem sources are because they often spill over to other areas. So even if you would be getting problems in other areas, they would often be the reason why they're coming from there, stemming from those specific concentrated areas. And if you could please scroll on the top to the table. Yeah.
Scroll up.
This table, okay. All right. The ones marked in red is the percentage increase. If it's a percentage decrease, it comes up as a green. And if there's no change, that's something we can document as well. So as you can see, and I know it's not visible to everybody back there, but what we are able to do is to segregate specific types of offenses and how frequently they happen. That, yeah, that's it. And how different they are from last year around this time. That's, that's what you see up there is that how this period looked when it was March 2021 and how it looks in March 2022 and all counts year-to-date. Essentially, what we are designed to do is use this model in terms of data and look at what problems exist and solve those problems through the process of evidence-based policing with our partnerships at University of Cincinnati.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
What does the negative numbers mean? It's like negative two, negative one, negative one, negative two?
That's the one you see change from last year of March 2021, which means that there would not be an incident there.
Okay.
Any other questions about the report itself? This is, yes, this is for official purposes only. So it's for the decision-makers and I would leave up to them if they wish to share that with the public. So going by the concentration itself, our partnership with the University of Cincinnati enables us to look at more proven practices in law enforcement policing. And this, there is a model that we follow called the scanning, analysis, response, and assessment phase that helps us to look at problems in a much bigger picture and to not simply treat the symptoms of a problem, but treat them at the root cause by directed patrols, by solving that through the environment of the crime problem. So to give you an example, if there is a high crime happening at, let's say, a motel or a residential complex or a shopping complex, high number of thefts, then we would try to, you know, work that out with the management or work that out by treating the area around it, such as putting up lights or having solutions that are not simply showing up at the scene, but to actually work with management, work with council, and work towards a solution that can, for a longer term, resolve the problem instead of directing all our resources in one place, whereas we could focus on the bigger township as a whole. I'll also say this, that there are some sites that exist, which of course we can't really disclose because we won't want that to be made public. But there are sites that's sensitive law enforcement data where we know there are multiple calls that keep happening. So it's our, you know, responsibility and duty to pay closer attention to what criminal element exists there. That's where the intelligence piece really comes through, is that how we can monitor specific repeat offenders that are coming there and repeat targets that are being victimized. So, so that we can, you know, guide all our officers, guide our resources. And with the help of the District OIC here, he can then guide his troops there and actually target the problem than to simply attend calls for service coming from that areas. So overall, that's what our goal is and that's how different we have become from all the previous times of policing you've heard. And this kind of policing is a mixed model between combining intelligence, crime analysis, and problem-solving all together. And it's very unique to the Sheriff's Office only. I will guarantee you that this model right now is not found in any other PD. They would probably just have problem-solving, just have either community-oriented policing or focus on crime analysis. There wouldn't be a full thorough combination of all and especially not in a way that directly answers to our troops. So that's all I had to present. If I have missed out on anything, Captain?
So just a couple more things about us is the reason we partner with the University of Cincinnati is because we want to make sure that we're in line with legitimate and modern practices of evidence-based and data-driven policing. And so that we're always on the cutting edge of, you know, what's working. You know, we have, as the Sheriff's Office, in any police department, we have limited resources for lots of space, lots of addresses, lots of roadways. So it's really important to use our resources like any other business where it's going to be most effective. And so it's very important to us to use those patrol officers the best that we can and so that they're spending their downtime in ways that matter to our problem-solving efforts. I'll also say that Sims Township, just like any other place, doesn't operate in a vacuum. There's, you know, roadways leading to all these other jurisdictions. And we partner with every local, state, and federal agency that exists so that we're sharing information constantly. We're communicating constantly with them. We hold investigators' meetings even that brings all these different agencies together so we could talk about our priorities. So essentially, what this does for Sims Township and other parts of the county is it's a force multiplier for what you're getting. You're seeing the patrol officers on the street, but there's a lot happening behind the scenes to support them and do as much as we can to not just take care of the crime that happens, but be aware of what may happen in the future and try and do something about that, try and prevent it from happening. So that's why we're excited to come talk about this today because this is something that's growing. And it's not just, not just our good idea, there's a lot of science and research backing what we're doing, so. That's what we are, that's what we do. We're happy to come back anytime. You'll see a lot more of these reports come in the future. And if there's something that, since these are new, if there's something that you'd like to see different in the future, we're, we're very customizable as far as what you want to see. And we're always happy to come back and share the work that we're doing. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay.
I appreciate your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This makes a lot of sense.
It's like on the cutting edge too, which is really nice.
We're really excited about it and Lieutenant Tarr is a great partner to us and we're in constant communication. We're working on a couple of projects together now. So essentially, if there's, if there's keeping the daily crimes that you would expect, like thefts and so forth, at bay, we can try and affect those. But if there's something larger scale that's happening, we want to, you know, take, take some effect on it before it gets out of hand, so. Yes?
Are you able to show on a map, say of Sims Township or Hamilton County, something made available to the public at pinpoints where various crimes are occurring? Because I know on CPD, you can look up various neighborhoods to see various types of crimes. Is that also available for Sims Township?
So the map we're doing, so what you're seeing on Cincinnati's website is Cincy Insights is what they have, and it's a Tableau product. So we're, we're actually doing some work now to try and get some more interactive mapping like that. Right now, we have ArcGIS, which is a program that kind of plots out the calls for service and shows those heat maps. And so that, that map was, was the calls for service. So every time somebody calls for the police, that's what's showing up there on those red spots. So if you really zoom in on that, you can really see where the neighborhoods are, where it's happening the most.
But you can, you would know, like, for instance, there are thefts happening in this particular neighborhood, say, for instance, or, you know, break-ins or whatever the case may be.
That's right, yes. Okay. Really appreciate your time and thanks for having us this, this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, moving on, we're opening up a public hearing, a public hearing for the board to review a zone change application received to change zoning from A residence to 00 planned residence with subservient office. The applicant plans to construct an 80-unit apartment complex in one three-story building and a 2,000 storage building on the property with associate surface parking and one new access point from Schneider Road. The subject property is located at 11720 Schneider Road, on the east side of Schneider Road, north of 71 and south of Five Seasons, Country Club parcel 6200230045. I think we're going to open it up with Brian Schneider.
Good evening. Brian Schneider with Hamilton County Planning and Development. This is a public hearing for a zone change. Zone changes in the state of Ohio are laid out, the process for them is laid out by the Ohio Revised Code. There are several hearings that are required as part of the process, the first of which being of Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission recommendation. The Sims Township Zoning Commission then holds a public hearing, makes a recommendation. And then it is ultimately brought to the Board of Trustees for final approval, approval with modifications or denial of the zone change request. So that's how the, that's how the process works as it's laid out by state law. This zone change, as you stated, is being proposed to change the zoning from A, single-family residence to OO planned residence with subservient office. This is for a, would be for, to allow the owner of the property to construct an 80-unit apartment complex in a three-story building with one entrance off of Schneider Road and associated parking and stormwater detention. The property is a triangular-shaped piece of property that is bounded by Five Seasons on one side, I-71 on the other, and Schneider Road on the third side. And the access would be proposed from Schneider Road. The zone change was presented to the Regional Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission with a staff report that was prepared by the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission staff that I participated in reviewing and approving. That staff report is, looks like this, you should have a copy of it. I'll go through that briefly and then I'll recap the meetings and answer any questions that you might have. The staff report starts with a discussion about the first meeting that occurs in the zone change process. Before we get into the Ohio Revised Code process, we actually require a meeting with the neighbors. That's an informal meeting where members of staff attend and explain the process. The developer explains the request and then people are informed. They can answer, they can ask questions, they can raise concerns at that point. That way, everybody kind of knows what's coming down the road when the zone change is ultimately submitted. In this case, for this property, there have been numerous staff review conferences for different projects over the years, other types of apartments, other types of townhomes. There was an office complex, an office and slash residential development that was proposed. Ultimately, the apartment was, complex project was presented on September of 2021. There were a number of residents that attended that meeting. The issues included traffic lighting, watershed, outdoor activity, building height, the need for 2,000-square-foot storage building, which I don't believe is actually on the plan. It's, it's been proposed, but I think they took that storage building off the plan. As well as the possibility of a shared driveway with Five Seasons Sports Club. That was discussed at the meeting. Ultimately, that's not part of what's being proposed here as part of this development. Following that meeting, the applicant did submit for the zone change. The first step in us reviewing the zone change is to prepare the staff report. We go through the land use plan first for Sims Township. In this case, the land use plan calls for attached single-family, which is moderate-density attached single-family dwellings with individual entrances at grade and individual garages and scale similar to that of the surrounding land uses. Staff found that the apartment complex as proposed was not consistent with that designation. It doesn't include individual entrance to the units, it doesn't include garages. So it doesn't fit with that definition. And then we also reviewed the text of the 10-year master plan and found that the development would not be consistent with that either as it would not be consistent with the character of the surrounding area. And so staff found that the proposed development is not consistent with the adopted land use plan. The Regional Planning Commission has bylaws that require them to maintain consistency with any plan that they've adopted. So after the plan was adopted by this body, it was sent to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission also adopted it. So since it was an adopted plan, the Regional Planning Commission made a motion to find that the plan was inconsistent with the land use plan and to recommend denial of the zone amendment. So they didn't get to the point where they consider thoroughfare plan or zoning compliance or any of the rest of the report. If they can't get past that first motion, they automatically recommend denial, which they did unanimously on February 10th. So the Planning Commission recommended against the plan based on lack of consistency with the adopted land use plan. The plan was, the whole site was then presented to the Zoning Commission, which included the rest of the staff report. So the next section of the staff report discusses thoroughfare plan consistency. Snyder Road is a minor arterial, as far as the Hamilton County engineer is concerned. They like to see 50 feet of right-of-way from the center line on both sides, so 100-foot right-of-way is what they require for the, for minor arterials. This has more right-of-way than the thoroughfare plan requires this property does because it appears that ODOT bought additional right-of-way to construct the bridge when they built 71 and had Snyder Road go over top of it. So they, they bought wider right-of-way so that they could build the embankments and get up to the bridge. That's what they typically do when they have situations like this where they have to build over underpasses when they build interstates. So there's more right-of-way than is necessary. So they more than meet the thoroughfare plan consistency. And then there's, there are some impacts on some of the other sections of the code that I'll get into in a minute. But thoroughfare plan consistency is not an issue. The zoning resolution includes standards for the OO planned residence district and the development of the site. There are several issues with consistency with the requirements of the zoning resolution, so I'll go through those as briefly as I can. The first issue is with the maximum intensity that's allowed for residential development, multifamily development in an OO office district. The maximum allowed by the zoning resolution is 10 units per acre. The 80 units being proposed on the 3.6 acres on this site equates to a 22.2 unit-per-acre density. Staff did not support the increase in density based on the lack of any other similar densities or projects nearby that have any, any density near that. The next section relates to some of the transition area regulations. Transition regulations apply to this property because it's adjacent to residential zoning. Five Seasons Club is a conditional use in a single-family zone. And all of the apartments and single-family homes on the other side of Snyder Road are in residential districts. So because this is an office district, the transition regulations do apply. So the transition, and this, the staff report says that transition regulations require a 40-foot front yard setback from Snyder Road and a rear yard setback. I just looked this up. The OO district actually requires a 40-foot front yard and rear yard, whether it's in the transition or not. The difference between the transition and the regular setbacks is with the side yard and there is no side yard issue with this project. So whether it's transition or not, it's required to have a 40-foot front yard setback from the right-of-way. The building as shown has a 0.8-foot setback from the right-of-way. So they're asking to almost have a 0-foot setback. That does relate to the additional right-of-way I was explaining earlier since ODOT does have more right-of-way along this stretch of Snyder Road than, than the thoroughfare plan calls for. However, even if the thoroughfare plan right-of-way of 50 feet was provided, say they got a part of the, the right-of-way to be vacated or it was 50 feet like it was supposed to be, the front yard setback would still be 44.4 feet. So it's, or I'm sorry, 34.4 feet. So it still wouldn't meet the 40-foot front yard setback even if they didn't have the additional right-of-way that was required for this roadway. So staff didn't support that. That's an indication that the building is too big for the site. If it were made smaller, it could meet the setback requirements without any variances, so we didn't support that variance. The OO transition parking area regulations require a 20-foot parking setback when you're adjacent to residential districts. They're proposing a 10-foot parking setback. Staff is not overly concerned with the difference between the 10 and the 20 feet. We didn't support this just as, as you start to compound requests for variances, it just starts, it starts to seem like you're trying to fit too much on the site. If this were the only variance request, this would be the least of my concerns. The 10-foot streetscape and the required boundary buffers provide the landscaping you need. In fact, you're considering some tax amendments next month that would eliminate the 20-foot parking setback and reduce it to 10. So I'm not horribly concerned about that reduction in the parking setback. But as stated in the staff report, we do not support the variances, a list of other variances that are necessary as part of a list of other variances. The OO transition height regulations, because it's in a transition area, the maximum height is required or is allowed to be 30 feet. They're requesting a 58-foot tall, three-story from the front, four-story from the back building. So that would be a significant variance the staff didn't support. I also looked this up. The, the maximum height in the OO district is 45 feet. So the building wouldn't meet the regular OO standards either without a variance. So that's not necessarily related to the transition, it's just a really tall building. The landscaping for vehicular areas, we did not get a landscape plan. If you were to consider approval, we would recommend a landscape plan that complies with the code be submitted as part of the final development plan, which is a typical condition that we would recommend. The same with outdoor lighting. We did get a lighting plan. They are proposing 20-foot, 25-foot-high light poles where 15-foot-high is currently permitted. Again, you're considering changing that as part of the tax amendments that you're considering next month. 25-foot-tall light poles where 15 feet is permitted is a significant variance as it's stated in the zoning code today. We didn't support that variance and suggested that they submit a lighting plan in compliance with the code if considered for approval. Finally, signage, we didn't get a signage plan. If they were to want to have signage out on Snyder Road, we would recommend that they comply with the requirements of the code for signage, which would allow an 8-foot-tall, 24-square-foot sign. And then the transition buffer yard requirements, which is a little, it's different than the transition regulations that we were talking about earlier. These are the buffer yards, the boundary buffers and streetscape buffers that are required for all new developments. There's a 20-foot boundary buffer required on the, the two sides of residential zoning, one of which admittedly is I-71 right-of-way, where again, we're not as concerned about the buffer along I-71. The buffer on the other side, they're, they're encroaching into some of the required buffer next to Five Seasons Club. I believe that area is wooded. The real issue that, that we found with this is the lack of streetscape buffer along Snyder Road since they're asking to modify that and reduce that significantly. They've agreed to put landscaping in the right-of-way. However, landscaping is not allowed in the right-of-way. So they can't plant the required trees in the right-of-way and they're not providing all of the area that they need to plant the required trees along the frontage. So staff didn't support that either. And with the number of variances, the lack of consistency with the adopted land use plan, staff recommended denial of the zone change. As I stated earlier, the Regional Planning Commission found it inconsistent with the land use plan and recommended denial. And the Zoning Commission voted four to one to recommend denial of the zone change as well at their hearing last month. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You said something about ODOT purchasing additional right-of-way on Snyder?
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't research that, but that's in my experience. When you have a road that comes near where ODOT wants to build something, they buy what they need. Whereas the county engineer-- they need, whereas the county engineer typically buys the right-of-way and then gets a grading easement on the property next door. ODOT typically buys it as road, as road right-of-way. There's no difference.
How, what's the maximum landage that could go across the current bridge on Snyder?
I don't know. Probably two.
Two, two and a half?
Right. Without building a bigger bridge, yeah, they would, it would not be widened. That's right.
All right. Now, south of that bridge, do they, does ODOT own any extra right-of-way?
I, I believe that it's similar on both sides, that it, it's wider, the right-of-way is wider as it comes off the bridge on both sides, but I'm not positive.
So I guess what I'm getting at is there's no long-term plan to widen Snyder Road?
Not that I'm aware of, although the county engineer does like to maintain consistency with the thoroughfare plan wherever possible. They, they want to get their right-of-way if they can.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if this is for you or this is for Chris. We're talking engineer. I know there was not a traffic study done. Did, did this come up yet about if it's, if it's going to cause extra traffic or, or anything like that? Or can you speak to that, or do I need to wait to talk to them?
No, sure. I, I'm sure that the applicant can also address this. The, the Hamilton County engineer, when we send them zone changes at this stage in the process, when it's not been approved and there's no permits being requested, they send us back the same letter every time. It says that they have to comply with all the Hamilton County engineer's regulations. In this case, it said that they have to comply with site distance and that if a traffic study is required, that they'll have to provide one and have it approved. The county engineer doesn't require those or review those unless you work with them outside of the zoning process, until you get to the point where you're actually trying to build the project. When they come in for a building permit, one of the people that the building department sends it to, sends the, the building permit to is the county engineer. And if the county engineer needs a traffic impact study to make sure that you're going to have a safe access, they're not going to allow you to get your building permit until you provide them with all the information that they need. I guess they look at it like, you know, they don't want you to have to spend the money, and they don't want to have to spend the time doing all the detailed review for a project that's not approved or might not be approved. So that's why they sent us the two letters. They sent us a form letter in the beginning, letting everybody know what they're going to have to do, and then when they actually go to build it, they have to, they have to go follow through with that and comply, so.
Will they have to do a traffic study?
It'll be up to the county engineer to determine whether they have to do one or not.
Brian, one more time for me, because it takes me a while to process this, but, so I'm a little confused about when we talk about a thoroughfare plan versus the right-of-way and, and, I don't know, what, what am I missing with that?
So the Hamilton County thoroughfare plan is a list of optimal right-of-ways for all of the county roads. It's what they, the minimum right-of-way that they want to ensure that in the future they'll be able to build the roads that they need to handle the traffic.
From the county?
Right. So sometimes there's less right-of-way, and if there's less right-of-way, you have to dedicate it as part of this process. You'll have to actually give the county an additional 10 or 20 feet or whatever it is if you're short. When you have more than the right-of-way necessary, they, you know, they don't automatically just give you back the land. You have to petition for that, which is a thing you can do. You can ask for a vacation of the additional right-of-way down to the thoroughfare plan with, or you can just live with it, which this project is, you know, is proposed to just live with the additional right-of-way, and that's one of the reasons they're asking for the setback variances.
Okay. Thank you.
What kind of study was done, if any, with respect to site distance?
It's my understanding that they had site distance approved by the county engineer, which requires them to, they submit a, a study of where the location of the car is going to be, how far you can see in each direction, and what the speed limit of the road is. The county engineer does do, go out in the field and run those numbers if they've approved it. It's my understanding that they approved it. I'm sure that the developer could, could verify that because he would have had to been there verifying it with the county engineer.
Well, it really depends on where the access egress is into the complex design.
Well, they're going to try and find the safest place to put the ingress egress, that's for sure.
Within the limits.
Of their property, yes.
Yes, okay. But it seems to me with site distance, a factor should be the vehicle from which the site distance is measured. If you're in a tractor trailer and you're sitting up high, your site distance is one thing, and if you're in a low-slung sports car, your site distance for the same speed is totally different.
They're engineers, so I'm sure they've, they've come up with a number to that correspondence coefficient of how tall the typical car is.
I have no problems with site distance heading south on Snyder, but I do have to drill in it and so on, so I do have concerns of what the site distance requirements are heading north across the bridge, because you don't reach the peak until you're at the top of it, in the middle of the bridge at least.
So the way that, the way that we as staff view this is that the Hamilton County engineer is your professional engineer. That is, their sole job is to make sure that the roads that they maintain are safe to be traveled, and they use all of the, the latest numbers and findings, and, and if they, if they need more information to make sure that something's going to be safe, then they're going to require it. If they don't think, for instance, that left-hand turns are safe out of this driveway, they won't allow left-hand turns out of this driveway. So we, we kind of rely on them as the, as the engineer. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't look at a traffic study and decide if it's good or not.
Do we have that input that basically the county says it's okay?
If the county engineer, the county engineer will not allow them to open a driveway that does not meet all of their safety standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say that revised requires, despite the fact that this has already not been recommended, requires obviously another meeting for this approval, for disapproval process tonight, even though they've already turned it down?
This is the only body that has the decision-making authority for zone changes. All the others up to this point have been making a recommendation. This is the decision-making body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Chris, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
I know there's a lot to cover, but we're going to try to do it like 10 minutes or less, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name's Charles Baberman. I'm with the law firm of Dinsmore &amp; Shoal. I'm counsel for the applicant here. Our, our project team, we have Christopher Hildebrandt, principal of Morelia Group, who is the developer behind the applicant in this case, and we also have Jeff Flaherty, our project engineer from Cardinal Engineering as well. So we're all going to speak, and we will try to keep it brief for you.
Thank you.
I, I want to initially address just a few aspects of this project to, to make sure that everybody understands what it is that we're asking for and why. This is a, a zone change request with variances. This is not a development plan approval. We will have to come back if we are to be approved. We would have to come back for a site plan approval, where all of these specifics of access points and all the other engineering components of the site would need to be approved by the township in order for, for this project to be built and for us to get our permits. So there, there will certainly be an opportunity to address each of those items at that time. What we're here for tonight is to make a decision as to whether or not this is an appropriate use for the site, and we believe it certainly, it, it is. The, the site here is, is zoned A residence, and the, the fact that it has not been developed for as long as it's remained vacant is evidence that that zoning does not allow for reasonable opportunity to, to monetize and develop this property. It's a geographically constrained, topographically difficult site. As Mr. Snyder mentioned, it's, it's bordered by the Five Seasons Sports Club, I-71, Snyder Road, and frankly, it sits in a hole. And those factors all, all contribute to make this property undevelopable without sufficient density to facilitate the expense that's required to build the retaining walls and everything else that's needed to develop on a site such as this. Also, the, the transitional district regulations that Mr. Snyder mentioned are inappropriate to be applied to a potential rezoning such as this, because those transitional district regulations pertain to a property that abuts residential property. Well, in this instance, the residential property that this property abuts is the Five Seasons Sports Club, which is, is zoned A residence, but it, it is not a residential property. And so the purpose behind those transitional district regulations simply does not exist in this situation, because there are not adjacent homes that need to be sheltered from height or setbacks of that nature. The other sides, as we mentioned, are Snyder Road and I-71, again, providing buffers that already exist, such that this site should not need excessive buffers to set it back from adjacent developments. And then finally, as I mentioned, the, the, the topographical nature of this site makes the building height much lower from a viewer's perspective than it looks on paper when you talk about a 58-foot building. It, it is, only one and a half stories of that building would be visible from a resident's perspective viewing it from Snyder Road. So it is not a, it will not be a visibly imposing building, and we'll, we have some visual materials that will show you that as well. Furthermore, though, after the zoning commission meeting, we did go back and look at this. We heard the concerns of residents from the commission members. How do we make this building a bit less imposing? And we have determined we can build it at 48 feet and not 10 feet off of the building to, to try to address those concerns and, again, make this even lower from a, a, a resident's perspective in the area. So to conclude, we, we believe that this is an appropriate use for the site. This is a use that will allow the township to monetize its property, generate significant additional tax revenue with 80 residents moving to the township and then potentially working the township and spending money in the township, generating tax revenue for the township from a site that right now is not generating any revenue. This is going to be a high-end property. It is, it's going to be an asset, and it's going to take a portion of the township that right now sits vacant and make it something that you can be proud of. So Chris Hildebrandt is here, and he's going to tell you a little bit more detail.
Hi. Thanks for your time tonight. So as Brian mentioned earlier, back in 2017, when we bought the property, we started having the informal open houses. And, you know, back then, we came and we talked to residents about offices. Then we came and we talked about townhomes, and then we continuously started listening to what the feedback from the community was, right? So in conjunction with that, traffic, the line of sight, and the impact that the building has to the project were the three main issues that we consistently heard. So, Mr. Bryant, to answer your question, we worked extensively with the Hamilton County Engineer Department, and we actually had to move the entrance of our project down substantially because they determined where the line of sight was at, and so we moved the entrance down where they approved the line of sight. From both directions. That caused us actually to have to cut the site down. So from 71, there's a big knob out there right now, so we're actually having to take that dirt and fill in the hole, I guess, if you could understand that. So we're, we're cutting the site down, and we're going to have to put an 8-foot retaining wall up along 71 to be able to meet this requirement. Okay, so we're, we're actually taking the site that there is now, and we're lowering it even further, subject to the approval. So that was, that was one of the items, was the line of sight. And the second item was about the trip counts, right? And so everybody was concerned about the trip counts. So ODOT determined, based upon our trip counts, that our maximum hourly trip count would be 25. So that does not trigger a full-blown traffic analysis. So they did not require us to do a full-blown traffic analysis until we would actually hit 200 trip count in a, in an hour. So we're substantially less than the trip count is required to get, required to have a traffic analysis. Third part.
Does that trip count, is that only access egress to the complex, or is that include traffic already on Snyder Road?
It encompasses the traffic impact that our development would be making onto the existing.
Okay, so it's added, it said it would be additive?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Furthermore, we continuously worked with the, the engineer department, excuse me, and we do have a letter of recommendation or a letter of approval that's in this PowerPoint presentation for our 80 units. So we even took it a next step and was able to get the preliminary approval for our 80-unit development on this site for the multifamily project. Okay? The last thing I wanted to mention was the, the landscaping buffer. So as Brian mentioned, ODOT does not own, legally, let me make sure I'm correct. ODOT does not own the right-of-way. I still own the right-of-way. They have an easement, sorry, they have an easement over the right-of-way, but from our understanding, we are still allowed to provide landscaping inside of that easement area. Okay? Correct? Okay. So we are able to, to, to add, do you want to add something?
Yeah. It's my understanding that that's wrong. So.
Well.
If you put landscaping in the right-of-way and they take it out because they do some grading and they don't put it back, and we can't require anything to happen in the right-of-way, so.
I didn't say that they can't take it out and we don't require them to put it back. I'm saying if I want to bear the cost, but put landscaping in the easement on the property I own, I'm allowed to do that. If they take it out for future road widens and they don't put it back, they don't put it back. But as you just clarified here, there is no immediate plans to widen Snyder Road, correct?
I don't know.
Okay. So it could be two years, it could be 20 more years before they widen Snyder Road, and all the vegetation that we would plant to be able to add buffers will be there. So, did you guys?
Can I just clarify one thing? We won't be able to require that. If it doesn't go in, if it dies, we won't be able to require it, and it won't count towards any of the zoning required landscaping, just to be clear.
I'm not sure it doesn't, Brian.
Yeah, he's just saying you can't, you can't control that.
I can't make them, we got the county zoning inspectors, the township zoning authority can't require them to put new trees in the right-of-way. We can't count them as required trees. We can't require them to be maintained, and we can't require them to be replaced if they die. So that's just up to.
So I'm still a little confused over right-of-way plus easement, okay? ODOT has the right-of-way, and you guys have the easement?
There's, there's two ways. There's two ways that you can have right-of-way. You can have it in fee or you can have it as an easement. If you have it in fee or as an easement, it's still right-of-way. It doesn't really matter. I mean, it's semantics. They own the property, but that doesn't give them any other rights than anybody else that owns right-of-way. It's still right-of-way. It's road, right-of-way that was purchased for the road.
The only, I guess, from my standpoint, the only clarification is if ODOT owned the fee simple property that we're talking about, then I couldn't put landscaping inside of it. Since I still own it and they have an easement over it, I can put landscaping inside of that area. All right? So I know that it's, wouldn't be a requirement, but I'm here and it'll be on our plan. We will plant it. We would like to add vegetation there, so it provides further natural buffer from the residents that are in Sycamore Township, west of Snyder Road, and our development. Okay? Because I think they would be the only ones that would be impacted. I don't think anybody at the club's concerned about that development going on here, because they're just transient patrons, right? Going to the club and leaving the club. I think everybody here that's.
I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. Well.
Public will get to speak. We're just going over this part right now.
So would you like to, would you like to go through this slide and look at the?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one quick question, if I may, Chris, and kind of combine what I think I heard Brian said and what I think I heard you say. So you would voluntarily put vegetation to the west up against Snyder in an area where you're allowed to, to create a buffer, but that area would not count towards the trees that Brian's going to require? So they would be above and beyond that strip?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
And also, it's my understanding that there's, there's some roadway work that's happening on the bridge that might provide a possible sidewalk, maybe on both sides of the bridge?
Only one side.
Don't know if it's going to happen, but.
It's only going to be on one side.
We're trying.
We are, we are committed in the development pending an approval at our cost to be able to connect the sidewalk from the bridge to Five Seasons all the way across our property. So we're, we're committing to doing that.
That's a, that's a general requirement we have for development. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Understand that.
Okay. So again, we're talking about a Class A apartment project here. A total project costs are roughly around $20 million. Another added, it's all surface parking, right? So there's no structured parking at all with our plan. We will have a pool, a fitness center, yoga center, outdoor activated patio onsite, on our site. There'll be running and walking trails, and our leasing office will be on our site. We've also teamed up with some tenants of ours. We'll have a concierge dry cleaning operations for the tenants of the building and food delivery for tenants of the building.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The 2,000-square-foot building that was, that isn't?
Yeah.
If I understand it correctly? So this will be in the main, main building rather than an adjunct?
Yes, it'll be inside of the building on the lower level.
Okay. Was it really intended, originally intended for the 2,000-square-foot building?
No, the 2,000-square-foot building, we were just going to have maintenance. It was all the, at the end of the parking lot, we're going to have maintenance items just to be able to maintain the property, and it didn't meet some of Brian's comments, so we just scraped it from the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Is this going to be targeted to a specific age, like empty nesters, just out of college? I mean, do we have a plan for that?
You know, we had a market study done, and specifically within a three-mile radius of this site, they said that there was 5,800 people currently looking, this was as of November of 2021, 5,800 people looking from the ages of 29 to 55. So that was the age bracket that they came back with. So again, as you can see, Mr. Bryant, that ingress and egress point was determined from the, from the county engineer. In previous renditions, we actually had it further south, actually like 30 feet south, so that it more aligned with the drive aisle.
Okay.
But, you know, we had to kind of snake it around and bring it in that angle so that we can meet all the requirements.
Pushed towards the steep gradient, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're going to have to build retaining walls to come all the way around it to be able to hold that up. So this is the image of the building from the south, looking towards the north. It's three stories. Again, we were able to get it modified back down to 48 feet at Tite's Peak from this angle. So that was a 10-feet reduction from our previous renditions that we did.
It's 30 from this.
Sorry. It's 48 feet from the backside. So on the, on the, on the, on the backside is four stories. On this front side, it's, it's 38 feet from here, 48 feet from the backside.
Okay.
Okay?
And you really went, that was really roof change, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you did a flat roof instead of-
And we've also, we're working with metal framing and doing some different things to try to take out some of the-
All right.
The sections of the subfloor.
Okay.
So what you're seeing here is 71 on your right-hand side and Snyder Road on your left-hand This is a view, again, looking from Snyder Road, west looking east into the project. As you can see, we, we are planning and will add all of that landscaping inside of that easement area, as well as the other required landscaping on this, on the project.
So where's like the pool and the patio and all that stuff?
Yeah, so could you go to the next slide? So you see on the backside here, it's four stories? So for, on the backside here is four stories. So we have a deck on the backside that we've designed, and the pool is on that lower-level deck. You can see kind of people hanging out around the deck there on the lower level. Do you see that right in the middle of the building?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the deck, and all of the lower level is the amenity space for the project. So you walk in the front entrance, there's a three-story glass atrium that leads straight down to the, to the lower level, and then this is all the amenity space that's on the lower level of the building. Does that make sense?
Are these two and three bedrooms?
One and two.
One and two?
Yeah.
What kind of square footage?
They average about 1,100 square feet apiece.
Okay, so there's, ones would be less and-
Yeah, they're about, they're about 800 square feet for the single beds.
Okay.
Then we have single beds plus a den, then we have two bedrooms, and then two bedrooms plus a den.
Okay.
So this, this is a view that you would actually get, this is a snapshot that you would get from Snyder Road, traveling north, going south. So as you can see with the topography, you know, this 48-foot-high building is really have, you know, it's really hidden in this, this area. With the existing landscaping, it's already there in the back of the property. It's, you know, in our, in our opinion, we did the best that we could to try to, to try to conceal it and try to make as much vegetation as we could around it. It's just a different aerial angle there from the northeast looking southwest.
Do you have a view from the other subdivisions?
The only one that we have is from Snyder Road there.
This video shows, I mean, you don't see anything else around it. It's like in a, in a vacuum.
This video shows you driving.
Is this video, will play?
It should play. There should be all of it.
Do you want to do other things across the bridge?
So you can-
Can I just say one thing? We're going to have public comment, but we just need to get to that point. So can we just let him go through his presentation and then we'll do public comments? We absolutely want to hear what you have to say, but we'd need to keep it organized.
So-
Yeah.
I don't know how to go back.
It's okay. Maybe, if you go to the next one, does it have the building on it?
So this is showing the hole before the building's built. The next slide should have the building.
Do you want me to show it one more time, just because I jumped ahead?
There you go, there you go.
Okay.
So if you want to like counter-rotate and look around it, this is, you know, that was the, the previous grades and everything, and this is with the actual, the building on it, right? So this is north looking south. If you want to go all the way around so that you can see from a Snyder Road angle.
Can I ask a question? I want to, can you see this from like Silver Spring House?
No.
Can you see this from the other side of Five Seasons?
No.
Okay.
Can you see it from the other side of the expressway?
No, it sits, there's an eight-foot retaining wall between the expressway.
Sound wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you zoom in there, you can see that wall.
So do you, oh, this is a video?
Yeah.
I think you did.
Yeah, I'm not controlling any of it.
Oh, I thought, sorry, I thought you were controlling it.
I know. That's why I started it, and I'm like, I don't know how to stop it.
That one does show the building. Then do the next slide.
Can you turn this next slide, Ken? Okay.
If you, if you go to the, if you go to the next video, does it take you all the way around it, or?
That's the, that's the one, wait a minute, it'll do it again here in a minute. So like Chris said, this is before the grading and before you put the building on it. And then, so this is the one with the building.
So you're not doing anything, it's just, it's driving itself?
No, it's driving itself. I'm guessing that you guys set it up when you did the engineering. He, he did the clicking and made the video himself when he was putting it together.
So you can see Five Seasons, that's the building in the back of us, right?
She, I mean, the big one.
Yeah, that one's Five Seasons, right?
You can go to the next slide, there's another video.
Because I know when Five Season went in, we, I mean, Five Season, obviously no one wanted Five Seasons. The community was totally against it because I became a trustee right after it was placed there. So I know the struggles they had, yeah. Do you want me to click it?
Please.
Okay.
So where are the townhomes located across the street of Snyder Road?
Who recognized the number in that video?
That's, that's from the west side of, sorry, the east side of 71.
Yeah.
Just showing you, that's what the-
So this is what you're going to see when you're driving towards your complex, the trees?
Yes. There's the grades, there's exactly what you'll see when you're on Snyder Road.
And then across the street, this is where the subdivision is.
The townhouses, yes.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at the townhomes across the street, they're, they're as high in elevation as our building will be out of the ground.
Does the townhouses across the street, do they have landscaping?
They do.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can't see, from the townhouses, you can't see the street?
I, I don't know. I mean, I know there's a lake there, there's a lot of vegetation there. We, just driving down them, I don't think you can see them well.
Okay. Okay. Can we move to the next slide?
That's, I think that's a good representation of how big Five Season is compared to our proposed project.
And that's residential, zone?
Yes, it is, it is currently zone residential.
Yeah, they weren't supposed to get in there, but they, because they were considered a country club, that's how they got in.
So if you could go to the next slide.
Just another video? One more?
That's, that's the view from the, across the street, across Snyder Road there.
Keep going with mature trees, too.
Yeah, this is, Mr. Bryant, this is the letter that we were discussing earlier about the, about the Hamilton County Engineer. This is the letter that they provided us.
Okay.
Late, just about two weeks ago. So I wanted to make sure it noted there, it's for the 80 apartments, AKA Maple Place there. You see it in the, in the subject title. So it's specifically for our proposed development. Okay? Any more questions? Okay, go ahead.
Let me read it if I can, with my glasses. Our office has reviewed the preliminary plan for the above reference development and has no objection. The final improvement plan must meet the requirements of the Hamilton County Engineer Subdivision Rules and Regulations and/or the Hamilton County Engineer Permit Manual. Okay, I, I have a few questions. Why 80?
You know, for us and our lending-
I think, I think ours, what, that normally would be a 36, 40.
10 units an acre, 3.6 acres, 36 units.
So why not 60? Why 80?
It's a great, it's a great question, and it's really just a mathematical equation, right? So the land costs, the retaining wall costs, and the development costs, they're not going to change whether it's 32 units or 38 units, 62 units, right?
So if the building was smaller, why would you need all the variances?
Well, I'm getting to why, sorry. Yeah, our development costs are set, so, so forget about how many number of units we put on there. For us to put 30 on there, 40 on there, or 80 on there, we still have to build the retaining walls because we have to still come in at the certain location from Snyder Road, right? So we have to build extensive amount of retaining walls and do a lot of earthwork to be able to get to a buildable pad. And so when we look at those costs and associate it with our lending requirements, we have to meet a certain debt service coverage ratio. And so when you start to take all of that into context, you know, the actual minimum number of units is 80 to be able to meet those requirements. You know, at one of the renditions several years ago, I was actually, had planned with underground parking, 120 units, right? But after hearing a lot of the feedback from the residents, we kept scaling it back and morphing it back to the point where we got it as small as we could get it with the infrastructure cost that's required to be able to, to make it a profitable project.
Okay, so you're saying to me that if you did a 40-unit building, you would still have to get all the variances, no matter what?
I'm not saying the variance is, financially, we couldn't afford to do it if it was 40, because I have to do all the infrastructure the same.
You, no matter what size of the building it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
With all the parking and so on, and I'm sure there's a stream or something that runs through there?
Yes.
Is there any requirements for detention, retention?
Yes, so Jeff Flaherty, I'm the applicant's engineer. So that, that's one of the reasons why the building's the size it is, too. There's a stream in the back that we got to avoid. Obviously, there's topography there that we need to, to knock that knob off to get it down below the, the expressway to be able to get our entrance in there. And the detention, there's a significant cost because we're, we got to put that detention underneath, underneath the parking lot there. So that detention is underneath the parking lot in, in storage chambers essentially. So we, we capture that and then we let that, let that run off slower than it's currently leaving the site, and it will go back into that stream, the same stream that it's going to now.
I understand, we have, we have some other experiences with stored under parking lot detention.
But, but to further answer your question, we are going to, so coming under Snyder Road, there is a retention pond on the west side of Snyder Road in the multifamily development that's over there, and it is actually let out, and there's a head wall on the east side on my, on my property. And that has formed this stream that goes downstream and gets into the larger creek bed, right?
Okay.
So we are going to connect a pipe to that head wall, that, that opening where that's coming out and discharging on our property. We are going to connect a pipe there, and for 150 feet, we're going to extend that on the, you know, where the creek is currently at.
Is, excuse me, I'm sorry, but is that just to pick up, but is already coming through there?
Yes. So it, you know, things were done a long time ago, there was no easements on the property for that drainage or anything, so-
Okay, it's not-
Again, we're not trying to go backwards, it's just now we own it, we're trying to figure out how to work through it.
Okay.
So we're connecting to that pipe basically and extending it 150 feet so that it can get downstream and we can control it downstream, and it's all-
So you're going to let your detention under the parking lot feed into that pipe also? Or?
Two different pipes.
Two different pipes.
Okay.
So ours is stored in, we call them underground vaults in our parking, you know, in our parking lot. Ours will be stored in there and then slowly let out downstream.
Got it.
That will not be connected to the same pipe.
So it'll be two, but they'll end up in the same place somewhere?
Yes.
Anybody looked into what kind of issues that would cause downstream?
We, we've done extensive work with Army Cor, or sorry, Ohio EPA, figured out the amount of length of that pipe that we can put in. I mean, we're-
Yeah, but when it runs off your property, it's going somewhere, and it's, it's going to be aggravated for the people that are downstream of it.
Sure, there's, there's requirements in the next phase of this when we go to site plan approval. That's a little bit more detailed than we usually do for zoning approval, but yes, there's calculations that we need to do to prove that the water leaving, that downstream point is leaving slower than it's currently leaving to now, and that, that is a requirement of the next step of site plan approval.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get ahead of it.
No, 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 I mean, really what they'll do is they'll take all the calculations now, the upper surface water that's running down the street, down the hill right now into that stream, and then they'll look at our improvements, and we've got to be able to justify and verify that what, the amount of velocity of that water's going downstream is less after our development than it is now.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
Sure, any other questions, or?
Kind of more back to Jody's question about the 80 units. So I know, Chris, you, you attended the land use plan meeting way back when, and I believe at that time, I could be wrong, but I think we were talking townhomes. I know it was townhomes, and then it was office, and, and now it's apartments. I get the office. Offices are vacant all over the county. But can you explain the rationale between- the county. But can you explain the rationale between townhomes versus apartments?
Yeah, so it really all, it really all went back to, we had that road designed to come in thirty feet further to the south, right? And so when that road came in thirty feet further from the south, in layman's terms, it really doesn't mean that much, but it actually really does, because now, like I said, coming, when it was pushed north to meet the engineer requirements, we now have to build a retaining wall coming from that all the way around the development and going all the way east, right? So no matter if we build townhomes, or if we build, you know, something of a smaller scale, we have to put that infrastructure cost in there. So when we start looking at townhomes, you know, we could only get, I think, sixteen townhomes in there at the best, and it was, it was negative in every model that we ran.
From a topography, those townhomes would be looking at the expressway there.
Yeah. So I mean, we even had them, you know, double-sided where you're, you know, you're, you're, you're coming in through that new snake, right, coming off of Snyder Road there, and we had townhomes double-load on, you know, and I, and I, you know, so sixteen was a max that we could get, and then I didn't think it was marketable for families to have their backyards and children playing right up against seventy-one. So, you know, with COVID and the economy and everything else that's going on, it's just didn't financially make sense for us.
Got it.
And to follow up on Chris's point, it gets to the, the essential issue here, which is that there are just unique factors in this site that are different from nearly any other site that will come in front of these trustees. Between the, the grade there at the, at the street, how far, where we have to put the entranceway, the, the ODOT easement that is causing our, our building, which is, it's actually going to be setback seventy feet from the physical roadway, it's causing that to be viewed as a one-foot setback, although from a viewer's perspective, it will be seventy feet from the roadway. And then the, the transitional district regulations, which are exacerbating the variances that we need. For example, the building height here in the O District, it's forty-five feet, but for the, but for the transitional district, which we would only be asking for a three-foot variance. But it's, it's because of this transitional district that these variances are appearing to be so significant. But there's no need for a transitional district here because there is no residential component adjacent to the site. It's a Five Seasons. So we, we ask that you have some perspective as to why this list of variances is in, is in front of you for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ken Phil, do you have anything you want to before?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up to the public. So there's a lot of people here, and I want to hear from whoever would like to speak, but I would like to limit it to three minutes a person. And if someone stated what you wanted to say, you can just come up and say, "I agree with so-and-so," or whatever. But we will need your, name your address, and who wants to be first? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm-
Question.
This is just for the public hearing for this. Yes, and then when we're finished with this, we'll move on to other business. So I'm gonna time you guys, okay, just so I don't say three minutes and then I give someone ten and someone two and you get mad at me, okay? So who wants to be first? Okay, ready? I'm starting my timer.
My name's Denny Lynch. I live 11998 Snyder Road, corner of Cypresswood and Snyder. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-three, so I've seen a lot of changes along Snyder. I've also seen Snyder Road become more and more dangerous. It used to be, you could count the number of cars that ran up and down Snyder in a full day with two hands. And now, I mean, it's just exploded. And now you're talking about adding to that volume? They, they've spent, I don't know, an hour talking about what the building's going to look like, which is a concern for sure. But they kind of skirted over the volume of traffic that's going to be added to this. I mean, people that live down at the bottom of that hill, and I didn't hear anybody mention that Big Dip, what I always called the Big Dip. And people that live down there take their life in their hands trying to simply get out of their driveway. A lot of times, there's mail trucks and UPS and FedEx and school buses that are stopped down at the bottom of that hill. And when you're heading north and come down that, you can't see them, and now you're adding to the volume of traffic? It's just, I mean, from what I understand, the county has turned this down, the Sims Planning Commission turned this down. Why is this even still an issue? I, I don't understand that, but that's all I've got to say.
Okay, I, I want to address the safety. Since I have the police and fire here, do we routinely get accidents on Snyder Road? Do you, can you remember the last time we've had an accident on Snyder Road? Okay, I, just, because I know they have the statistics.
Certainly have county accident reports and frequencies.
I would have to, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it doesn't seem-
Because I meant to bring that to the table tonight, but I forgot.
I have witnessed-
Okay.
I totaled my car. Yeah. She totaled her car.
Okay, so that's something that we'll need to look at. Okay, thank you. Okay, who wants to be next? Come on up.
I, I just want to elaborate on this gentleman's comments.
I need your name and address.
My name is Cheryl Eichman, and I live in Somerset, 11735 Thayer Lane. And it is a home. There are, there are townhomes, there's apartments, and there are, there are connected townhomes, but ours is a freestanding home. So don't think our whole neighborhood is just condos. There are freestanding homes that are very expensive homes, okay? Your concerns, it's wonderful what we've listened to as far as the thorough zoning information and the developer's information, but your concerns, and you have to read between the lines here, should be for safety, okay? This is not appropriate use of the land. The speed limit is thirty-five, but nobody goes thirty-five. Us who know better, know to go slower, but nobody goes thirty-five. This is a neighborhood. There is Hamiltonian, there is Somerset where I live, there's Bishopsgate, the apartments, and there's Sterling Run. I also have a son and daughter-in-law who live in Sterling Run. They belong to Five Seasons. Five Seasons are families. They are not, as the developer just used the term, transient people who don't care about what goes in there, because this is going to add to the traffic. We want these families to be safe. There is CHCA and multiple buses all day long from every single school district. There is the Spring House, which is about to add on. It's, it's going to add on a hundred and fifty parking spaces coming up in the next few months. Now, you think of all the people who leave, come and go from Spring House. Sometimes they are sane, and sometimes they're inebriated. Now, think about that. It's a fact. There are three roads right there, okay? So there's the road coming out of my neighborhood, which is Trotters Chase. Then there's Five Seasons. That's a conflict right there and really, really tricky. And then we're going to add, they would like to add another, another road right there, which, which is just a recipe for disaster. Someone is going to be T-boned or rear-ended, and it's going to be innocent people. It's either going to be people from my lifestyle community, it's going to be families from around by us, it's going to be students, teenagers from CHCA High School. T-boned or rear-ended, and it's going to be on your shoulders if you make this decision to go with it. And it's going to be on the developer's shoulders, the attorneys, and your shoulders. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mary, Mary Noor, 11634 Kemper Woods. Adding on to the traffic issue, I would advise you to be on Snyder Road about eight in the morning. If you're traveling south, as people are trying to drop their kids off at CHCA, the traffic is backed up to Five Seasons and beyond. In the evening, from Fields Erdel South, it is backed up. Try to leave Five Seasons during rush hour. You take your life in your hands. I know this sounds like a small issue, but the water pressure in our area over the course of the last two decades has nothing but decreased. So you're going to add additional development, and it's going to get even worse. They mentioned people spending money in the community and more taxes. Well, sales tax, yes, to Hamilton County, but these people are not purchasing. They're renting. They're, they're not paying property taxes. So they're going to be using resources of Sims Township, yet paying no property taxes. You've had Sims Elementary just added on to. There are potentially kids going to be moving into those apartments. Has anybody thought about whether Sims Elementary can handle an additional influx of kids? Because from my understanding, that the addition that they put onto that school was to accommodate the current residents and not, who knows, forty, eighty kids, who knows? So that's something to think about. And again, the, the, the sightlines, those are all important, but what, what that video showed, in my estimation, I recognized none of it. And, and I think it's, I thought the video is very misleading.
Thank you. Come on up, you don't have to raise your hand, just come on.
My name is Judy White, and I live at eighty-one fifty-one Trotters Chase. My question is, and I don't know if you can answer this, are you going to be able to turn left out of there to go south, or are you only going to be able to turn right, I mean, to go, yeah, south, right, to go north? Well, it's important, because if you're only allowed to turn right, and then you eventually need to turn left, what's going to happen is they're going to go up Trotters Chase, cut through our entire neighborhood in order to get, to go south. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because there's no way to go, yeah.
Can I, can I talk at the end of the address, maybe some of the questions, or some of my ones?
So that was my question.
That's perfect, that would probably be the best. Okay.
Chris, would you come up, please?
Who's next?
He's gonna-
He's gonna do it at the end.
Oh, you can do it at the end? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna do it now.
I won't be redundant and say what everybody said because I agree with them. I've lived in-
Can you say your name and address, please?
John Door, Winthrop Lane, Somerset.
What's your address?
11785. We've lived in this community since nineteen seventy-three. I came into Sterling Run first, we moved out, we now have had two different homes in Somerset. We've been thirty years along Snyder Road. We've watched Snyder develop. We go to the Chicken House, and it's like everybody else in the community. But what we've seen most of all is the backup of the school buses that were set, and that, that street just gets stopped all the way back, and it's going to continue. But what's the biggest concern for us is people are cutting through Somerset to bypass all that. So as more cars hit Snyder Road and people figure out, they've already figured it out in the sports club, the children's club, uh, sports on Kemper, they come through our development to bypass Kemper and Snyder. And this is just going to add more traffic backup in our neighborhood. Coming through in a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, they're not driving twenty-five mile an hour. And we have a lot of people walking, crossing streets, trying to get out of our community on some, on Snyder. It's just, it's not going to be a smooth transition if that's the way you go with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dallas Howard, and I live in Huttonbauer, Hamiltonian. I'm at 11652 Rising Win Court. I think this is a terrible idea for a laundry list of reasons. Number one, safety. My own daughter got rear-ended trying to turn into our neighborhood, going south on Snyder, just across seventy-one. Left-hand turn into our subdivision, someone flying over the bridge just destroyed the back of her car. Thankfully, she wasn't hurt. She was a junior in high school. But that Snyder, if you have to get on it every day like I do, it's a disaster waiting to happen. Experian Automotive did a study in February that said the average household has about two point two eight cars per household now. You add that with eighty units, you're looking at a minimum of two hundred and sixty additional trips per day, not counting UPS, FedEx, any Amazon deliveries, and the list goes on and on and on. That's a huge problem for us. They come flying through there, you can hardly get out as it is now. It's a major safety concern. There are students and children from our neighborhood that walk to CHCA. I could just go on and on about the safety issues, but I'll, I'll stop right there. The additional thing that I don't understand for the life of me is why the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission unanimously said no to this. Why then, a four-to-one vote, the Sims Township Planning Commission said no, and the only one that voted yes, quote-unquote, said something has to go there? I don't understand why we have committees and boards to give recommendations if we're just going to do whatever we want to do anyways. I think that we all have to answer to boards, and when we go against our board's wishes, when you get one vote for, and they tell you something has to go there, that's a huge problem. I also think that, I'm not the expert, I'm not a developer, but eighty units with all the amenities is going to be very hard to cash flow. So if you can't cash flow that, what happens to that property at that point? That's another problem. The list could go on and on about water runoff, water pressure, you name it. But my biggest concern is safety, because it was a hazard to my daughter, and it's a hazard to everyone going up and down that Snyder there. And it's only going to get worse if this goes in. So those are my concerns, and those are my issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Yeah, Jim Boyle, eighty-three, eighty, Hamiltonian, president of the Huttonbauer Farms Homeowners Association, right across the street from these guys. To me, this smells like a bad investment. It's trying to make something good that's bad, and I don't think it should be at the expense of all the homeowners in that area. I agree with Dallas. I mean, you had the regional commission disapprove it, you had these guys disapprove it, why are we here? I mean-
It's a process, we have to do that.
Right.
It's the applicant's right.
It's a statutory requirement.
Yeah.
I also want to say that Hamiltonian is a cut-through to Kroger. So what we're worried about is they're going to come out of that little eighty-unit development and head right through our development, heading to Kroger. So, so that's going to be a lot of people heading down our development. The other thing is, I heard there's going to be a lot of earth that has to be moved to get this thing sunk. That's a lot of dump trucks. Where are those dump trucks going? Up and down Snyder. So everything these people have talked about on the safety issue is real. You guys got to listen to that, because we're going to have a problem with safety when this development comes in.
The law should not have to pay for the purchase of a piece of land that is less desirable, and that's what this will sound like.
Thank you. We, we got it, yeah. Okay. Hello?
Hi, Craig Smith, eleven, six eighty-four Kemper Woods. I'm in Hamiltonian. I served with Jim on the Board of Directors for the HOA. We took a vote unanimous, everyone's against it. We also have a Facebook group with a lot of people in the community on it. We also are on, what is it, Nextdoor, and this has been a very hot topic. The people you see here, there's probably five to ten families waiting to hear what's going to happen. Everyone is extremely concerned, and it's really the safety issue, the traffic, but also home values. I mean, Huttonbauer Farms only has sixty-four units. They're talking about putting in eighty. So it's, you know, I agree with everyone here. Very high visibility, I can tell you. After this meeting, there'll be a lot of emails.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Ron Bell, B-E-L-L. Live at one-two-oh-nine-three Snyder Road. Lived there for thirty years. And I just want the trustees to understand that- And I just want the trustees to understand that Snyder Road is a rural road. I mean, it has no berm, the lanes are narrow, and they're hazardous. And to even contemplate adding more traffic to already horrible situation is beyond my understanding of reasonableness. I can testify that I have sat on the Big Dip that he was talking about, okay? Almost met my maker five years ago. I'm down there, truck accident, right? Truck's coming over the top of the hill. I'm sitting there in my little Mini Cooper. I'm thinking, where am I going to go? Right? So I bailed out across four hot lines that have been knocked down to avoid getting hit by the truck. So it's really, really, really a bad situation. And the thought of adding more traffic and more congestion is just really unthinkable. It just makes no sense. So just underscoring that and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Ramsey, 11634 Almahurst Court, part of the Hutton Bower Group. I think everybody can agree Snyder Road is already a mess. But I didn't hear a whole lot of talk about peak traffic levels. So most of the people, if they're working people in those apartments, are going to be coming out, you know, between 7:30 and 8:30 and they're going to be paying back between 4:30 and 6:30. And I don't know if the traffic analysis they did looked at peaks. But also Snyder gets extremely busy if there's a problem on I-71 because it's the workaround for I-71 also. So I've been looking forward to getting widened. I don't think that's in the books, but I think it's the peak level of traffic that we have that's going to be the issue, not, I'm a retired guy, I can go in and out whenever I pretty much choose, but a lot of people can't. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave Marks, 911-940-PALMETTOS-DRIVE. Purchased my house 26 years ago. I appreciate the comment by trustee Lee's where Five Seasons came in. The zoning process at the time was less robust. I appreciate that it's much more robust now and I want to thank all those on the trustees' board who have been around or keeping an eye on that, especially with Five Seasons and other corporate interests. We don't have much of an influence once that's done and so I agree with all the comments so far that it would be a good idea to decline this based on all the merits you've heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Robbie Bukler. I'm at 11938 Derby Day Court. Just wanted to make sure because I did not recognize any representation from Sterling Run Farms, or if I did, I missed it. I agree with everybody's points around the safety factor. The only addition that I would make is that there are a lot of young families moving into Sterling Run Farms. There is a lot of turnover from older families that originally built in that community and are downsizing and moving out. And there's a lot of families moving in. There are six families that we're very, very close with, all happen to be CHCA families. We all have kids, you know, 12, 13 years and younger, and there's going to be a lot of additional children. You may be commuting back and forth to school. I will not let my son walk to school on Snyder Road, so I just wanted to add those couple of points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ashton. Address is 11980 Barnswood Court and came there in 1986. So as has been mentioned, we've seen everything explode around there and I just have some things that I think would be important for you to think about. Accidents on Snyder Road, yes, I've been hit pulling out of my subdivision and not all accidents are reported to the police. If there's not much damage, you pull over and, you know, take care of it that way. So I don't know that that, how much that will tell you. I'm wondering, why do we need more apartments? We are surrounded by apartments. We have lots of apartments and I don't know if you've looked at, I've heard that people were looking at, how many people looked for places to live in that area, but I don't know if they were all apartment lookers. We have lots of apartments. There are going to be 80 units, but that doesn't mean just 80 people unless somehow you're going to just have one person per unit. I don't think that's going to happen. So there are going to be a lot more people than 80 people in that many apartments. And the other thing too that I think is really important are students. And at Sims School, they are overloaded, they're full right now. If you have apartments, there are going to be more students. There'll be even more school buses. If you've ever tried going down Fields Erdel Road in the morning or the afternoon when those school buses are loading or unloading, I've had to sit there for six minutes because there are so many students getting on and off the buses to go to Sims, just the elementary students. So that's going to just be even worse. And there are buses from all of the surrounding districts that have to transport through that area. So I just think those are things that you should really seriously consider. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kim Georgetown and I also live in Sterling Run Farm. I agree with what everyone else has said here today. I also have a daughter who's getting ready to turn 16, so we'll have another driver. Yeah, and she also attends CHCA and we're members at Five Seasons. So this affects me in various ways and mostly it's the safety concern. You know, I think that is a very difficult piece of property to develop, but I do know CHCA is expanding greatly and perhaps the high school would consider purchasing it and adding it to the high school complex. Just an idea. I know we're looking for a new dance location for our dance team. My daughter is a dancer there as well. So, and they were looking at possibly building a new building for that, but they have no more space on the current campus. So just an idea to propose, other than having, you know, multi-family units sort of blocking up that area, which I can tell you, it takes approximately 20 minutes if you're leaving Sterling Run Farm to get to CHCA in the morning between 7:30 and 7:45. So there's a pretty big backup that already occurs there at that time of day. So, thank you.
What did you say your address was again?
11964 Bright Silks Lane.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Vergelak. I also live in Sterling Run Farm. I'm on the board of the HOA. I've been a resident for 27 years. I agree with everything that's been said. My major issue is with the safety of the residents of Sims and of your neighbors over in Sycamore Township across the street. A number of issues were brought up and the developer's response was, well, that's not a subject for tonight. We're going to take care of that somewhere down the road through other processes, either with the county or Transportation Department. I would say, please do the right thing tonight for your residents and your neighbors unless you stop this here and now. Thank you.
What was your address, sir?
8124 Starting Gate.
Okay.
Good evening. Catherine Bell and I'm at 12041 Snyder Road, so just south of Five Seasons, down the Big Dip. And just a nod, as I stand here and look behind me, there are so many of us, whether or not we all get the chance to speak before you, but I think, I'm a mother of five children. I have an 18-year-old who is driving now and a 16-year-old who is, has her temps. And it is a reality that we all deal with as, with young kids. How safe do we feel with them? And for me, it's always been Snyder Road. I, God, if my parents didn't live on Snyder, I probably wouldn't have, we wouldn't have ended up on Snyder Road. But to add more just seems illogical. It seems, it seems like we're not paying attention to the impact it will have on families. And I'm here to say, I am foregoing overseeing homework of my five children right now to be here to say, please, please listen to the voices of those of us who have spoken and do, do the right thing. It seems crystal clear, maybe everyone would say that, for all of us as we listen, but just would ask you to hear, to hear us. As a side note, my daughter, the 18-year-old, was hit on Western Road, T-boned. A driver ran a red light on a cellphone, which is another, the technical devices that we have in our hands is so dangerous. And then we were hit, my husband and I, a year, a year ago on Snyder at a stoplight. Someone just flew over top our truck. So, as we were sitting at a red light. So, all that to say, we have been hit. I don't want to get any more hits. I don't want more people on Snyder. Let's be wise and use discretion and wisdom when we think about the impact of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ralph Wolf, 8311, Hamiltonian Drive, right on Snyder Road. And what I want to impress on this board is that is an A-zoned residential area. Everything around it is A-residential and changing that little parcel at this point and adding all of those apartments does not make sense. It only makes economic sense to the person that wants to develop it. Now, I'm also on the board of zoning appeals, as you all know, and I'm going to have to recuse myself when this comes to my board, if it ever does. But, but also as the traffic, about once a month, I do see cars parked in front of my house because of accidents. So, and it's all because of the heavy traffic during school time in the mornings and in the evenings. It's during the daytime and I work from my house and it's not that bad getting out with this traffic. But during the high-peak times, it's backed up forever and sometimes I don't even get out unless somebody lets me in. So I just want to let you know, it's, what all these people are saying is a truth. There's a lot of traffic during the high-traffic periods and adding more to it doesn't make sense. Changing the zoning just to make it a double O for, that's an A, doesn't make sense. And Five Seasons is actually an A and it's allowed in an A as, because I was on that committee when it was allowed in, so I, you know, that's what it is. So that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Teri Vower. I live at 11658 Rising Wind Court, Hamiltonian. I live, that's a lot of these people next door to Dallas. And I wanted to just wholeheartedly agree with all of the comments. It's mostly its safety, its traffic, that, you know, coming from Fields Erdel going towards, you know, Kroger and the Silver Spring House, that place right there, you take your life into your hands like every time you go. I've told my kids, my kids are young adults now, but always, always, always look because once you're here, they don't see you. So I start trying to break a little bit just so somebody behind me can know that I'm going to be turning left into Hamiltonian. So, vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is, excuse me, Linda Pritchard. I live at 11649 Chancery Lane in Somerset. And I was just wondering if the developer might mention, how many parking spaces do you have planned?
120, wasn't it?
I don't know. There's 151 parking spaces on the plan.
151.
Well, I think, you know, early years, I lived in apartments and you have some wonderful amenities. I think what you're planning is nice. However, you know how many people will come that are friends or relatives of the people living there that will be coming in and out, I'm sure, to enjoy the pool and enjoy the amenities and visit their families. So I don't think we're just looking at 160 with a couple driving back and forth to work. I think we're looking at even more traffic than that because of the nature of, of the community he's building, which will have amenities, that friends will come and visit. So, and I do agree with everyone tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Prajit. I live on 11178 Snyder Road. I agree with all my community members here. For me, the biggest concern is safety. I have a seven-year-old. I'm scared to send him to school bus without any one of us because of the traffic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. School bus stops.
My name is Richard Newbauer. My address is 11935 Snyder Road. I'm on the dip. I pull out this where my driveway is and it's extremely dangerous. I think we've heard everybody up here talk about how bad Snyder Road is. I think the development obviously is not going to improve it. It's going to be a low-end development. You know, we saw these nice pictures of the, you know, apartments and their balconies viewing I-71. It's extremely loud and I think they're going to get low rents and I think it's going to be just a lower-end unit there. But the real conversation here ought to be, what can be done to improve Snyder Road? Everybody says how dangerous it is now and it's only going to get worse, but what can be done to make it better now? You know, is it widening it, putting a third lane in? I'm not sure what it is, but that's, I think, where the conversation should go.
Thank you.
Mark Legwinen, I live at 9355 McKinney Road. Not directly affected by this, but I drive Snyder enough and safety concerns are of an issue. I support the residents that have spoke and opposed, that you guys voted, that you guys vote against the variances. That's 19. The first speaker, Cheryl Mary, Dallas, John, Mr. Boyd, whoever number seven was, I couldn't hear, Jim, Dave, Robbie, Kathy, Kim, Chris, Kathleen, Ralph, Teri, Linda, whoever number 18 was, I'm sorry, couldn't hear him, and Richard. I try to list and be very open and whatever and I always tend to land on the side of the community and the residents. And in listening to the developer, I heard one thing specifically. This project is driven by the bank and the investment. So, you know, I don't want banks and investment companies deciding what's best or right for One question I have for you guys is very simple. How would approval of these variances improve the township or the safety or quality of the lives of the residents? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris, would you like to get the last quick comments, please?
So just a couple of questions, suggestions here. One of the, one of the ladies asked about the movement, so it is a full-access movement, right? So it's, it is approved preliminary through the engineer for full access, okay? Secondly, want to put into context something. If this was a transitional double O zoning district, it would allow for 36 units without any variances. Under the Institute of Transportation Engineering Trip Generation Calculations, that would be 72 trips per hour, okay? Based upon the unit mix that we have, at the peak, we are going to generate, based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineering and Hamilton County's agreeance with this, we are going to create 25 at peak, right? So we are less than half of what a single family transitional zoning, what?
Okay, you guys, you guys have, he was respectful to you, so you need to be respectful to him, okay? Thank you.
So, and it's predicated just upon the amount of bedrooms in a house, right? So that's just how they do the traffic counts. The third thing I wanted to mention is that they stated that none of the residents would be paying property taxes. We anticipate, we, as the owners, we anticipate this to be about a $250,000 a year of property taxes, okay? So I think that was answering all the questions. Okay, I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I am going to move, we had Resolution G-twenty-twenty-two-dash-forty-one, resolution approving a zone change from A-residential to double-zero Plan Residential for Subservient Office located at seventeen-twenty Snyder Road. I'm going to move it up. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Comment? Roll call?
Ms. Lees.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Beck.
Is this for moving it up?
We're moving it up.
Oh, moving it up.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So we're, we're moving it up. So, now that we moved up, I'm going to move approval of Resolution G-twenty-twenty-two-dash-forty-one, resolution approving a zone change from A-residential to double-zero Plan Residential for Subservient Office located eleven-twenty, seven-twenty Snyder Road. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's discussion. I can tell you that, um, I've heard the residents, I've heard Chris. I, I like to think things over before I make a decision, so I am not ready to say yes or no tonight, because I understand there's a traffic safety and, but I want to be fair to both sides, so I want to make a very educated decision when I make it. So I would like to take to our next meeting to understand, I want to replay the tape so I can listen to both sides, and I just want to make sure I make as an informed decision as I can. I understand the resident's safety absolutely one-hundred percent, but I think if I would make a decision tonight without being fair to both sides, I wouldn't be doing my job as a trustee. So I just want to make sure I understand everything completely, and I make a decision based on reviewing the tapes, listening to everybody. I, and I agree, there's probably safety there, but I just want to make sure that I make the right decision. So I will not be ready. I don't know if you two are. It's up to you.
Well, I mean, I took a lot of notes. By the way, this is not a typical monthly meeting for us.
No.
Right.
We're glad.
I think it's a good idea to re-watch the tape and listen to the comments, um, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, and take time to think through this deliberately.
Because we owe respect to both sides as a trustee. So, um, does that mean you're not ready?
I would move to table.
Okay. Ken, is that...
Well, I'm not quite sure what other information you're going to get, other than watching, watching the tape, so...
It's a matter of understanding what's been shared tonight.
Yeah, I want to make sure I get everything right.
Okay. All right, then I won't object to tabling.
Okay, so...
So I moved.
Right.
I'll second. Roll call? Next meeting is the first Tuesday of the month. Kim, do you want to under, do you want to...
Monthly electronic newsletter can go in, but the paper one that you get in the mail is, is only a couple of times a year.
Do you... The electronic was, it's May third, but the electronic newsletter, it wasn't an electronic newsletter.
Yes. So will you, quickly, quickly? So we, when people are going through zone changes, we notify residents within...
Two-hundred feet.
And that is by...
It is by our zoning...
Hold on, hold on.
It is by our zoning resolution.
It's not by our decision, it's by zoning, okay?
It's by our zoning resolution.
Yes, it's not, you guys, it's just funny. I know, but we're, we're trying to tell you that we send things out, we try to get it out as much as we can. We're bound by what we're allowed to do as, you know, as trustees. You guys have to be understanding. I, I appreciate you guys being here. I appreciate you being patient with us. We just, we just want to make sure we're doing the absolute right thing, okay?
No, okay. The public hearing is closed.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second to table, and any discussion at this point just needs to be on the motion to table.
Okay, so let's do roll call.
Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Lees.
Aye. And I'm not saying we're not going to do what's best for residents, we just want to make sure, that's all. We just want to make sure...
Why do you owe them anything? You owe the residents of the community...
Can I...
Ten minutes.
Okay, thank you. There you go. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to recess.
Second.
Roll call?
Ten minutes. Ms. Lees.
Aye.
Mr. Beck.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant.
I think Ken just needs to get up.
Say aye.
Aye.
Ken? We're back in session. I approve a disbursement warrant number, numbers, eight-zero-eight-three-five-eight-zero-nine-nine-seven, and vouchers forty-six to seventy-three in the amount of one million sixty-four thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Can I say fifty-four cents? Forty-four. Does, roll call?
Second. Oh, okay. Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Lees.
Aye. Um, reports, law director.
Thank you, no report tonight.
Please.
Uh, just real quick, over the past month or so, we've seen a large number of thefts of checks that have been mailed and placed into U.S. Post Office boxes, the blue boxes that you would see outside of the post office or in your neighborhood. Um, apparently, what we believe is one of the, those are universal keys, and one of the keys was, uh, taken in a robbery, um, and they're accessing those boxes, and they're taking checks out, rewriting the information on the check, and people are, have, we've seen, um, at last count, over two-hundred thousand dollars in losses just in Hamilton County.
Wow.
So we are advising residents not to place any, uh, checks or other important items into any of those mailboxes, um, at this point. At the last, last count I saw, we had seventy cases that were investigating, um, and a number of those have been in Sims Township.
Are they changing the locks?
I, I can't speak to that, I would hope so, but I think that's a rather large project, since there, it's a universal key.
Universal key for all boxes.
Yeah. So...
Is this happening overnight kind of thing, or, I mean, could you drop a check in, in the mailbox at the post office, if they have pickup times at three and five, if something close to that?
We, we don't know when it's happening. Um, it's still an ongoing investigation. Just our recommendation from our criminal investigation section is if you do need to drop something off at the post office, take it inside. Most of, most of them have, or I think all of them have drops inside.
Yeah.
But the blue boxes at this point have been compromised.
Okay.
Okay, um, um, Director of Public Works?
No report tonight.
Okay, committee? None, just other, none?
Oh, you skipped fire, Jody.
Oh, I did skip fire, I'm sorry, I checked them off. Fire.
Good evening, board, you have our written report in your packet, and, uh, we're available. I have Deputy Chief John Frye here with me tonight, and we're available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Okay, I went through them all. Hearing from residents. Anybody would like to come up and speak? Y'all tired from the last two hours?
My name's Kerry Kane. I live at one-zero-one-two-zero Beto and Old Drive. This is regards to your ongoing thing to put something in place for short-term rentals. I know the, uh, Board, Zoning Board, uh, recommend, recommended keeping the, uh, one year, less than one year thing, instead of making it a shorter term. I would just ask you to think about what, what is most likely to withstand a court challenge? So if someone thinks that a one-year or less is too short, a short-term, or too long a short-term to be defined, you know, if, if...
Maybe six months.
Three months or six months would, would definitely still serve the purpose of eliminating weekend rentals or weekly rentals. Uh, I just don't want to be in a, I don't want you guys to be attached where you put something out there, and then, you know, first, first day it's out there, gets challenged in court because it's quote-unquote, uh, unrealistic or overbearing in one, for one way or another. So just consider that while you're doing that. Uh, and then I, they also recommended, uh, instead of prohibiting, uh, I think they recommended the, uh, conditional use allowance, instead of prohibiting short-term rentals. I'm not sure which, the way you're going to go on that, but I guess I don't know if I have a preference or not, other than, what I, what I, what I understand, if you prohibit it, that means anyone that's currently doing short-term rentals is going to keep doing it, and if you make it conditional use, then everybody that's, has one in existence would have to go through the conditional use approval. Which, on one, on one hand, sounds good, and the other hand, sounds, well, if, if they, they went through that process and then whoever's on the BZA approved it, then, um, then you're stuck, but I guess you're, I had to assume that the people on the board would do the right thing. And, and the other thing I'd like, um, maybe a separate tack, I actually went up to Columbus a couple of weeks ago for the hearing on the five-sixty-three, the short-term rental thing, and it appears to be, it wasn't on, even on their agenda this week. So that seems to be on hold for the moment.
I can tell you that I had a meeting with John Houston, and in that meeting, I addressed that issue, and I don't think at that level, they understood the effect it would have on townships. So I think they're looking at it more.
That's great. And lastly, I don't know if there's another thing that they can, you can look at besides just the short-term rental prohibit, prohibiting short-term rentals or controlling them, because I know the house next door to me, when they rent it, eighty percent of the time is rented to more than one family. So there's multiple families there. Uh, I don't know if we need to, can, can beef up the, the zoning to say, whether it's short-term rental or long-term rental, you can't rent a house in a single-family residential area to multiple families. So then if someone does come down the road and tries to prohibit or limit your ability to do something about short-term rentals, you, we have something else that says, hey, you know, they're, they're renting it, they may rent it to one person, but they know they're renting it to two or three families, because there's, there's three families, two or three families showing up, so. If there's any zoning thing we could do to kind of, kind of surround it and attack it from, from two different directions, so if someone is successful in, uh, challenging a short-term rental prohibit, prohibition, uh, maybe the other thing, at least would keep it to, having it rented just to one family, I'd, I'd much rather have, I, I could maybe live with just one family renting a vacation house next door, but it's never just one family, it's always two or three, sometimes four. So if you can maybe talk amongst yourself or talk to the zoning people and say, gee, is there something we can do to beef that up from that perspective, that would give your, uh, your community some other, uh, extra protection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Hello.
Hi. How are you?
Very good, how are you?
Good. Um, Barbara Wilson, seventy-nine oh-six Clement Street, Camp Dennison, Ohio. Um, I am here tonight to kind of update on the ongoing progress in Camp Dennison. Um, the O-DNR, Friends of the Bike Trail, have taken down, um, four trees that were hazardous on Clement Street, on the corner, on Clement Street down to Lincoln and Campbell. And so it, there's a bare area all the way down. We, the neighbors, myself and a neighbor, two neighbors, have planted trees along that area years ago, and what we would like to have done is have, I believe, we figured it was about five more trees to plant along that area to continue on that line. That area where we would put them is actually on Sims, from what I understand, Sims property. It is not necessarily on the O-DNR, Friends of the Bike Trail. It's literally where they would be planted is here, and the trees were taken out here, so just down from them a little bit.
Are what type of trees?
Um, I've talked to the O-DNR, um, and trying to get recommendations from them, what they would like to see to work along with them. They, we have pear trees there right now, everybody's got pear trees everywhere in all these communities, but I'm told that they are...
Yeah.
Not to be replaced. So maybe a cherry tree, something flowering, um, and, well, also, we're working with, there's a couple of us that are working, and we're going to talk to, um, some of, like, natorps or some of the landscapers to get their recommendation.
So can you decide what type of trees you would like and give us some options?
Okay. Absolutely.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So we're moving on correspondence, um, events and meetings. The Great Easter Egg Hunt is this Saturday, Saturday, April ninth, twenty-twenty-one, at eleven-thirty at Sims Park. Hopefully, the weather is going to be nice for us. We're very excited. It's our first one back since COVID, and I know we've been getting a lot of calls and a lot of response, so I'm excited for that. Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, May second, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM at the Safety Center. Regular trustees meeting would be May third, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM at the Safety Center. Zoning Commission Meeting would be Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM at the Safety Center. Storytime for the, storytime with the Sims Library, it's back. On Monday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at ten PM until ten-thirty at Mead Park.
AM.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Sims Honors Vets, Friday, May twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM at Home of the Brave Park. And Memorial Day Holiday is Monday, May thirtieth. All public buildings will be closed. I can't believe we're talking about May already, to be honest with you. Old business, we have none, new business, um, discussion concerning beehives in community gardens. Um, I asked for this to be put on because I met with a gentleman at Mead...
Kerry, hold on a second, so I can hear.
Yeah, who lives across the street, and he's interested in putting, um, beehives at Mead. He said he would love to do demos for people. I think it would be a really cool thing to have. There, we have a location that's kind of out of the way, that nobody will bother, and I, I think it'd be fun for, at least to try to see how it is for the community. And the community gardens, I know people have been calling about that little community box that they want to redo and, um, plant some plants.
Where is that?
At Mead. The, there's a, there's like, the little tiny box this year.
Couple of boxes, there were, a couple of boxes earlier.
Yeah, there's probably, there's, there's six plots with room for like, um, green beans because they're, they grow up the vines and stuff. So this year, I, the boxes need to be built. I don't know if we make a person a deal, if they want to plant something there, they redo the box, and next year, I mean, some people charge, some people don't. I don't know if we want to worry about it this year, but maybe next year, we can think about if we want to charge them like fifteen dollars or whatever. Kim, do you have any, you...
I think Deerfield Township used to do community gardens, and they lo, no longer do them. Oh, I think they used to charge thirty dollars, and it was mainly for access to water.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to think about the community gardens, if you want to see how, if someone wants to try and build, because the boxes need to be rebuilt. If they rebuild the boxes, and then we can take a look at it next year, whatever you guys want to do. We kind of leave it first come, first served this year, because it needs to be redone.
As far as the community garden, I'm certainly open to that. I just want to make sure that, um, we assume it's going to be used and taken care of and look nice, but, you know, if for some reason the opposite happens, we'd have to have a...
Yeah, well, right now, they're not going to take it.
They have to write up some kind of procedure, I think.
Yeah.
With some strength.
We've had, I know the gentleman that I talked to about the beehives, he was interested, and I know Kim has received a couple of calls about that box, too, so, um, we can have Kim look it up. All right, how about beehives?
I'm open to that, too.
I think it'd be kind of fun.
What do you want to put on?
Okay, so you know where the, the scouts, um, garages, like their storage area? Okay, so you know where the scouts garages, like their storage area? There's a spot that kind of goes back down, that is kind of open, so the sun, because the bees need the sun, too.
Back towards the trail?
Not down towards the trail, but that way.
Behind the?
So here's the barn, here's where the bees would be.
Behind the people who live next door to the mead house?
Not behind there, it's to the side.
Okay.
It's, there's like a little opening that it would fit.
Between the storage building and mead house itself.
No, the other way.
Okay, towards the trail.
Towards the trail.
Don't you put, don't you put these things close to where they can pollinate and?
Nope. You put them wherever. And I think what we would need to do is like, build a three, like, just a little fence, like, three fence, so people can look at it, but, you know, not get too close. Right.
Jeff, are there any liability issues that we need to be thinking about with bees?
With bees?
Yeah.
Well.
Speak into the microphone. I mean, as your lawyer, I guess what I would say is there are always liability issues, but typically, something like that, I guess, I don't know if that would qualify for like a recreational.
Would we just establish like a safe perimeter or something like that?
Yeah, that's what you do, and you just put up a sign. I mean, yeah. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but.
So like a safety sign, but also we'd want, like, here's what you're looking at, kind of sign?
Right. And we're all invited to put our bee suits on and be a beekeeper. I think that would be fun for us. He's going, wants to do little demos, we put it out on Facebook, like, this week, we're going to, because I think every, once or a couple times a month, they go in and they clean and, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would.
We have some residents in Sims Township off Somerset that have multiple beehives now, that you may be interested in talking to them.
Uh, he's one of, he contacted me. Yeah, I just don't want to say his name on camera, if he has someone his name on there.
No, that's good.
Okay, so that's a go?
Yep. I'll judge.
Okay. Discussion concerning, or requests for trees to be planted at Scott Friar's at the corner of Antietam and Union Cemetery. I know I talked about this back in December. I think he's contacted Kim because he is interested in trees. As we put in that sidewalk, we removed honeysuckle, and that opened his backyard. So I thought it would only be fair of us to put something there to close it back up. So I don't know what you want to do. Kim?
You guys tell me.
How many areas does that apply to, and how much is this going to open it up to other requests?
Okay, well, this is, we're only talking about areas that if we come in and we, like, we're building a sidewalk or something, and it opens up, we've done it in the past, opens up their area in the back. I mean, I think we need, if we come in and build something and we disturb a backyard that you can see, I mean, very blatantly when you're driving down Union Cemetery, I think it would be nice for us to put something back there, since we removed it. Make sense?
But my question was, how many properties does this involve?
One, just applies to one.
Well, now that's one request now.
It's a case by case.
It's case by case.
I'm concerned about pressing precedent.
We've done it in the past.
We did it on Humphrey.
Yes, we did.
We did it as part of the negotiation. On, on Humphrey, yes, at Appleseed, Apple Crest, right?
Yes.
The Mitchells.
Yes.
Okay. And that was a, it was a different kind of issue, I think, but we worked that all out in advance of doing the work. We have signed, what do they call it, temporary easements all along where the sidewalk was put in with all those people. And if we do something for this guy, I feel like other people are going to want to do it, too. Now, I can justify, because I found out that we actually touched part of his property to change the grade to the wall, I can justify us giving him some compensation, shall we say? And he submitted a plan, the cheapest plan he submitted was, what, forty-five hundred, Kim, something like that? Forty-two hundred?
Forty-five nineteen.
Okay, forty-five hundred, through a landscaper, and if we do something, I think we just give him some money and, and let him, let him have it done.
Right, absolutely.
That's what we did on Humphrey.
Right.
Okay, but I'm not sure that I feel comfortable in paying the four, forty-five hundred dollars. I'm thinking a thousand or two thousand, maybe, maybe half of what he's asked for.
Bill?
Did we grade, Kim, question for you, when we cut the grade behind the retaining wall, was it all within the right of way, or was a part of it on their property?
We went two feet onto his property to feather, to feather it out.
And that's the only way I can justify giving him that.
Was, what was the agreement with that two feet, do you know?
He agreed to allow us to come on his property to grade that, so that when we cut it, it matched up. That we just didn't lop it off, that we kind of feathered it into the wall.
Got it.
But he agreed to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he, we, he signed the agreement, and we paid him a dollar for his, his agreement.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I'm okay with if you want to do half or whatever.
So Kim, you're in touch with Scott Friar?
Right, I have his email, yep.
Okay. Do we want to ask him, you know, I'm trying to think of, of an amount of compensation that relates to two feet? As far as.
I don't know how to quantify that.
I don't either.
I mean, Ken made a valid point, I mean, he's willing to compensate him half, so maybe, maybe you just do half.
Do you want to contact him and see if he's willing to do that?
If that's okay with him, or if he's going to come back.
I think you guys just need to vote. I mean, you just vote. This is what we're going to give you, he can accept it or he doesn't.
Okay, that's fair.
Say, we're willing to compensate you two thousand dollars or whatever.
I move to pay Scott Friar at the corner of Antietam and Union Cemetery, two thousand dollars for replacement trees caused by the sidewalk that went in.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
I move, I set a motion to set a public hearing date of for May third, twenty twenty-two, at seven oh five, for the board to review tax amendments to section thirty-one definition, section fifty-one general provision, section thirty-seven double E, planned resident district, section one forty-three point thirty-two shared parking, section one forty-six outdoor lighting, section one seventy-one additional use height and area regulations and exceptions, section three twenty point four variable message center, section thirty-one, or three twenty-one point four wall signs, section three twenty-one point five variable message center, and section three fifty-one detached garage storage structures and other detached structures of the Sims Township zoning resolution.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hang on a second. This board passed resolution for tax amendment changes some time ago, and we sent them to the county. And what was it, the zoning commission looked at them also, and they have some changes, is that correct? And that's what we're going to discuss at this public hearing?
We're going to discuss all of the above.
Okay. So we're going back through the stuff that we've already?
Right, so you guys can, you guys can hear comments, you'll hear staff comments, and then you're going to hear comments from the audience.
Okay.
And then you're going to make a decision, once we close the public hearing, about whether if you want to go back to your original, the way we wrote it, if you would like to accept the suggestions or recommendations made by A, the planning commission, or B, the zoning commission, or A and B, zoning commission and planning commission, because they do differ. And then you're going to have comments from residents, so you're going to have to make a decision on whether you want to incorporate any of those changes, all of those changes, or none of those changes.
So my question is, did we already have a public hearing on this matter?
We had a public hearing at the zoning commission level. This board will, this would, this, this what this motion will do, is set the public hearing for our next trustees meeting on May third.
I apologize, I thought that there was a public hearing.
Well, there was, there was just one.
And that explains why I wasn't there, probably.
Yes, wrong board.
Okay? All right.
So roll call.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye. I move to accept a fifteen hundred dollar donation from Loveland Castle for twenty-twenty-two storytime program, the police department and the fire department.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion? It was very nice of them to offer. Roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
I move to appoint two representatives to the tax incentive review council.
Second.
Discussion? That's you, Joe and Phil, are you okay to do it again this year?
Sure.
Okay. Joe?
As long as I'm available.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
I move to not request a hearing for a liquor permit for First Watch Restaurants Incorporated, one-one-three-zero-one Montgomery Road, Sims Township, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-nine.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye. I move to authorize the township administrator to sign the Hamilton County Stormwater District Fee Notification to Acknowledge Receipt of Their Intent to Assess the Residents for Stormwater Fees.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, they changed the rate, Kim?
No, it actually stayed the same.
All right.
It's fifteen dollars and some change.
Wow. Isn't that, isn't it based on square footage or something?
No, it's based on per lot, so I think eight or so dollars goes to planning and development, and seven dollars goes to the stormwater district.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
I move to authorize the township administrator to enter into a natural gas aggregation agreement with natural gas supplier recommended by Energy Alliance, the community's energy aggregation consultant commencing in June twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call, I mean, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
I move approval of resolution G twenty twenty-two dash forty-two, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, authorizing the township administrator to enter into agreement with Prodigy Building Solutions in the amount of eighty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars to replace the roof on the park shelter and restrooms at Sims Park.
Second. Phil got it.
Roll call.
Discussion.
Okay.
What's, this is an amendment.
They're just changing.
Yeah, what happened was, is we originally had these funds coming out of the ARP fund, and the ARP fund is a federal fund, and it, it requires us to bid out all projects. So we would not be bidding this under the federal program, so we had to switch it to our park funds, which, under the park levy fund or any park period, you do not have to bid out your project. There is no bidding requirement for park projects, so that's why we had to move it to the park levy funds.
Okay, so this is just to amend the funding source?
Right. Nothing else.
Are we still getting three prices, though? Three quotes?
Prodigy will do that, they, we hire them, and then they get bids from other contractors.
Okay.
And we've got an amount in here. Is this not to exceed, or?
No, that is the amount, that's the bids that they got.
So they bid it, they bid it out to multiple bidders, and the winning bid was such and such.
Right.
So they're, they're our subcontractor, if you will.
Yes.
Our contractor, and then they're subbing it out.
Yeah, they're the GC.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye. I move approval of resolution G twenty twenty-two dash forty-three, resolution authoring the township administrator to enter into a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the Board of Township, Board of Township, trustees, okay, thank you, of Sims Township, for the installation of a traffic signal preempting system on Fields Erdel Road.
Second.
Discussion? We probably need to look at these traffic devices on Snyder after tonight, right?
We don't, we don't have any traffic.
I mean, not traffic, I was talking about the.
Traffic.
Speed limit?
Thank you.
We need digital speed limits.
Yeah, digital speed limit. That's where my mind was going. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
I move approval of resolution G twenty twenty-two dash forty-four, resolution adopting updated emergency operation plan.
Second.
Roll, um, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
I move approval of resolution G twenty twenty-two dash forty-five, resolution amending resolution G twenty twenty-one dash sixty-six, authorizing the township administrator to sign an amended agreement with LJB Incorporated for the design of engineer services for the parapet and vandal fence on Snyder Road and Hopewell Road Bridge replacement project in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Is this the one that Sycamore's going to pay part of it?
Yes, so the agreement with Sycamore is, is that we, what, we had to increase the design fees by ten thousand dollars in order to accommodate their side of the bridge that will have their logo on it, so that our design engineer had to actually do extra drawings to accommodate this, to submit to ODOT. So when I contacted Sycamore Township, I said it's going to be an additional cost, and then we'll figure all that together, and whatever the cost is for Snyder Road, the, you know, the project itself, just for Snyder Road, that they would pay, reimburse us for half of those costs.
Okay. Roll call.
So this is an amendment?
Right, originally, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar project, and then we increased it by ten thousand to get to thirty-five thousand.
Okay. I thought we did this before. Maybe not.
Roll call.
Mr. Brian?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye. I move approval of resolution G twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, resolution authoring the purchase of an additional turnout gear and various other equipment from Honeywell and other vendors in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Second.
Discussion?
This is additional turnout gear that was requested by chief, and the reason is, is because they were not able to purchase any turnout gear last year, just because of the supply chain issues.
Okay, so now we're doubling up?
Right.
Right.
And we can, we can get it this year?
That's correct, we're just purchasing what we were going to purchase last year.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Brian? Aye. Can I ask a question on that issue? We appropriated money, twenty-five thousand dollars or something for turnout gear last year, and then we didn't spend it? So is that money still appropriated for first?[1694.04]
We re-appropriated it at the last meeting. Like, I added it into the appropriations because I knew it was coming.
Okay.
So, um, it doesn't carry over. We just canceled the purchase orders at the end of the year, and we'll just start again.
Okay, but are, is the aggregate $50,000?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. That's what I wanted to get at. All right.
I move approval of Resolution 2022-48, Resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to purchase security cameras for the Camp Dennis and Nature Trail in Seven Gables Park in the amount of $11,708.71.
Second.
And we need these? Yes?
Yeah, it's just a continuation of our safety. So, we put the cameras in the parking lots.
Okay, this, uh, Nature Trail, Camp Dennis and Nature Trail is gonna be over the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Roll call?
Ms. Lees?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
I move approval of Resolution G 2022-49, Resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to purchase replacement parts for Lemmy Playground and perform turf maintenance underneath surrounding structure from PES in the amount of $12,326.54.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Beck? As part of the discussion, aren't the, are these parts hard to get, Kim?
No, we found a company that was actually able to give us a quote and replace similar features. They're not exactly the same. They're, they're similar in nature.
Okay.
But we've had an issue, I guess, I don't know if we have adults that are using the stairs, steps, or whatever it is, but they're pretty much have destroyed and broken the steps that, you know, or for that little twirly thing, and then everybody, and then, I guess, with all the use, the handrails, we've replaced them a bunch of times, and so we have to replace them again.
Okay.
And then the other part is for turf maintenance. So, with that shaw grass, you have to perform maintenance every so many years, and it's been, I think we installed that in 2018, so it's been about four years since we've done any maintenance.
Okay. Well, they asked for a roll call, and they called my name, so I'll say aye.
Roll call?
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Lees?
Aye. I move approval of Resolution G 2022-50, Resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to enter an agreement with Pavement Technology for Road Department to purchase reclimate, reclaminate?
Reclamite.
Thank you, in the amount not to exceed 2,000.
Second.
Uh, can we discuss that for a second?
Yep.
Uh, I don't remember any purchases of that amount.
It used to be included in our paving program, and then last year, we pulled it out of the paving program because we know now that we can get it for a cheaper price through a company, I believe, is out of either Cleveland or Columbus.
All right.
So, now we will probably, um, in the future, now and in the future, purchase it separately.
Okay, is that a year's supply or multi-year?
No, this is for, like, the roads that we paved last year, that we did not put reclamite down on. So, we will go back to the old paving program from last year and put the reclamite on top of the pavement, which will prolong the life of it.
Okay. So, this is a coating? This is like a sealant?
Yeah, it's a sealant.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, let's see. Roll call?
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Lees?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Absolutely.
I move approval of Resolution G 2022-51, Resolution rescinding Resolution G 2022-13, Resolution authorizing the purchase of preempted device and various other equipment from the Capital Electric, and authorizing the purchase of the preeminent devices and various other equipments from Pathmaster in the amount of $47,856.
Second.
Discussion? Just changing. Roll call?
Yeah, so this is just basically changing the, um, the per, the company that we purchased the equipment from. I had Capital Electric, and they went, ended up going with Pathmaster, and then we had to switch some intersections. We had originally talked about providing preemption devices along Fields Erdel, and then, uh, the Fire Department added three different locations, two on Mason Montgomery, and then one at Union Cemetery and Governor's Way.
And the net was?
The net is less. Yeah, and Deerfield Township is gonna do their own separate agreement with ODOT and Warren County, and just like we previously, in another resolution, we're entering into agreement with Hamilton County for the devices on Hamilton County. The ones that they're under control of.
Roll call?
Ms. Lees?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
I move approval of, let's see, of the following expenditures and authorizing for the Township Administrator to sign any necessary contracts, agreements, or paperwork. A, expenditure $7,575 for National Gun Night for emergency repairs to a pipe at 10572 Tannenger Hills. B, expenditures $8,600 for Televac Environmental Incorporated for the repairs to a pipe in Union Cemetery. C, expenditure $1,124 for Joe Grassi reimbursement for medical and prescription cost.
Second.
Discussion? I don't know if we should give it to that Joe Grassi guy.
Well, I'll just switch to the Township insurance, and, and it'll cost you more.
More. Roll call?
Uh, Mr. Beck?
Absolutely.
Ms. Lees?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bryant?
He's not answering.
The tension is high.
No.
Cut the tension with that. Well, I didn't want to say the same thing.
You better quote in your head.
Okay, I move to go into Executive Session, ORC, Section 121.02, to consider the compensation employment of a public employee or official employee. Yeah, I said that right. I'm getting slap happy. Roll call?
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Lees?
Aye.